Six o'clock. Time caller, September. Maybe the Cannon County Commission to order. We would please stand. You will be.
Father and heaven, we're so thankful this day is meaningful. Life itself, Father. Father, we gather around this table to consider the business of the county. We would carefully go over the agenda and we will rule in a way that will be official for this county and the citizens of this county. We'd ask now as you can watch over throughout this meeting and throughout the other days of our lives, if I will come down the end of the way to grant some holy deeds, in the name of the Lord.
The name. Please. The name is true white, the United States of America, and the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, infinite. Father, did you call, brother?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Brings number five, approved change agenda, change that I have, it's all pleased, the commission is to tell committee update, remove at the bottom, the bottom of the agenda.
Can I add something to the agenda? I would like to add that a few people. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please.
To me, to recommend that we change the name to the eminent service in honor of Wade Campbell and the name of the health department in honor of Cannon. Can we put that on the agenda?
You've been asking to put it on, this, this, this month's agenda, tonight.
Yes.
It could be discussed tonight.
Will you bring it up next month?
Yes, if that's what I have.
But it could be in discussion tonight.
Well, I could put it on the agenda.
Next month?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. So, I would say the jail committee update, it is just update. Oh. If you so please.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda with the jail committee update added at the end.
Got a motion to approve the jail committee update. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. All in favor. All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda. Got a motion to approve the agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, aye. All in favor. Braces number six, consent agenda. Approved meeting minutes, August first, twenty twenty four, and approved notaries. The notaries are Michaela Bentley, Sherri Lynn Hawthorne, BND Hale, Travis, David Hancock, Brady, Jackson Mason, Jamie Hale Person, Bailey Brady, Parker.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August first and all, all notaries.
Second.
Got a motion to approve consent agenda, vote aye and a second, do I have a discussion? All in favor, aye. All in favor. Braces to number seven, public hearing. Consideration of an amendment to the bump to the zoning map to rezon 2622, Mack Minville from A1 Agriculture to C1 Commercial to allow or use as a home for the elder. While we open up that public hearing now, is there anybody that here is against? Hold on. Anybody who would like to? Step right up to this and state your name, can I hear?
Jesse Cunningham.
I'm Darla Cunningham.
That's my wife for twenty-three years. We have acquired a property at twenty-six twenty-two, Mack Minville, Iowa. My wife here has been in healthcare before we even got married, so she's been doing this a long time. She has her administration license from the state for assisted living. Looking at them in there is I've got some, a package to give everybody, and I've got enough to give everybody want, if they'll pass it around. But a little background, this has been a dream of hers to provide this service of a, kind of like an assisted living home. And, you know, once a loved one gets to that situation where they have to have home care, it gets very expensive. And then the next step is a nursing home, there's no in-between, there is in other counties around us, but there's nothing here in Cannon, and we'd like to provide this for our county. But I'll let the expert speak on that.
No, I am, I'm very passionate about this, and I do in-home care, and it comes to a point where it does get very costly. And the next step is the nursing home, and sometimes they're just not quite there. They just need help with daily activities, grooming, bathing, you know, meals and things in that nature. But I just want to provide a safe, comfortable environment for the elderly, for our community, and that's what it is. It's going to be a home for the age, so there'll be someone there twenty-four-seven, that certified personnel to help with any services that they need. And we hope to, you know, be there for a long time. We, I was raised and born here, so I love this community, and I would love to provide this service to the, to the seniors. So you might have any questions?
How many people?
It'll be a six-bed facility.
If I'm sure of that, Jesse, you were saying that Darla, you have your administrator license?
I do, I got that in G.
So you would be the administrator of this? How many employees would you have on staff?
It just requires to have one, you know, in a twelve-hour span.
Been a minute since I've been up through there, the area around that. Now you tell me a little bit, there's, there's the church across, and I think it's a park, no, not a church.
So, over witness, the state park is right across the road. Jim Cummings turnaround state park, and there's a cell barn, it's kind of diagonal, and there's a little cajun shop on the corner. So it's all commercial all around us, so that's why we kind of looked at this to get commercial.
So you got everything but this one particular spot. I take it to start getting through the BTA, where there's nothing to fill?
Yes. We went, spoke with upper carver, and they advised us to go this round.
Is there any, might be in the future, when we're margining? Not that particular, you might could add some to the back or something, but it can only be a six-bed or less.
We're not adding no square footage to the, to the home.
And is that, you're saying it couldn't be, is that due to some healthcare regulations or just not what you guys want to do, or healthcare regulations?
Yes.
I was saying, because the space would be there, but with regulations.
And just to clarify, I think they, it's a BZA, I think that's mistaken.
I need questions, right?
It's not a BZA.
Did the planning commission give a recommendation?
Yes.
They were on board.
Was it unanimous?
Jonathan, it was unanimous, is that not correct?
There were three yeses, one extension, and one, I'm sorry, three yeses and two extensions.
I have a question, I'm curious, somebody with healthcare systems, I have to come in.
Yes, I've got a stack of regulations. You know, we're beginning to get this, you know, we've got to have the county's approval to move forward with this thing, but we've already got a plan reviewed, we've already got our case through the state, we've got all of it in place, we've already got our business license through the county. We've got everything, all we needed is that to get the county approving it to go further with the plans to get their seal on it.
I make a motion, we.
Can you, can you? One, two. Any more questions?
I was going to add, there's several in Redford County, and there's a few in Warren County, I've toured two in Redford and I've toured one in Warren County, and there's just not anything in Cannon County that, you know.
Which one in, I'm sorry, which one in Warren did you talk?
Danny B. Sanders.
Okay. Okay, so it's, kind of like that, okay. What's, what's the one in Redford that would be similar to this?
I see some.
Set off a warning, right?
And that's just the layout of the house. Thirty-one square feet, it's already there, it's all one level, but we got to make it ADA, handicapped accessible and all that. That's, we're just at the beginning, but that's, that's where we're at. County to move forward.
More questions? Thank y'all so much. Close this public hearing. Lose us to number eight, public hearing considerations of an amendment to the zoning ability code resolution to make that a center's name. You committed a false appeal in the I-1 industrial district zone. And who's doing, are you doing this? Anybody against it? Anybody wants to speak against it? Anybody wants to support it? Braces to number nine, both approve amendment to the zoning map to rezon 2622, Mack Minville from A1 Agriculture to C1 Commercial to allow or use as a home for the elder.
Make a motion to approve.
I will just, last public hearing, I will be, who's my next motion? Mr. Sanders, my next motion, do I have a second? Any discussion? Call, brother.
Yes.
Nathan Sanders.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Public hearing, vote, number ten, vote to approve amendment to the zoning ability code resolution to make that a center's name, you committed a false appeal in an I-1 industrial district zone, do I have a motion to?
I make motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Do you have a presentation, respect?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Um, this amendment is a, according to building codes resolution, includes provisions to establish that data centers can only be permitted by special exception in I-1 industrial zones. Data centers are the physical facilities where the internet lives, fundamentally they consist of networked computer systems used for data storage and processing. Along with supporting equipment such as batteries, backup power, generators, and cooling units. An emerging segment of the data center market consists of facilities dedicated in whole or part to mining cryptocurrency. Cryptocurrency is a decentralized digital currency that uses encrypted data strings to denote individual units for points. A peer-to-peer database known as blockchain to maintain a secure volume of transactions. Several of the most popular cryptocurrencies, most notably Bitcoin, are extremely complex computations to verify each transaction and event. For that transaction to blockchain, where it verifies the transaction first, receives a new cryptocurrency coin as a reward. Theoretically, anyone with a computer, a server, that's to combine new coins by verifying transactions in a large cryptocurrency mining operation. Passing a mountain of computing. Beyond the description of cryptocurrency, which is way over the head. Purpose of this amendment is that data centers that operators are compact and size with few regulatory restrictions. In a way, abundant water supplies and dependable and affordable. While there seems to be widespread consensus, data centers are essential to global communications and the global economy. Cryptocurrency miners have been wanting to limit socializing. Widespread concerns about the energy use of lines and the utility of the points it produces, led some countries to be trying to defend cryptocurrency. Consequently, many cryptocurrency miners are relocated to the U.S. From the exterior, data centers and cryptocurrency mining facilities may be physically non-stabilishing from many commercialized uses. However, the operational characteristics of these facilities are typically quite distinct from those surrounding land uses. Most notably, for the electric carriers, they took electricity and water use, their noise production, enhanced safety and security abilities such as gated access points, fencing, and lighting, and they have low employment density. This amendment, Cannon County's own building code resolution, includes provisions to establish that data centers can only be permitted by special exception in I-1 industrial. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any discussion? Call.
Nathan Sanders.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Park George.
Yes.
Katie Mayer.
Yes.
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 Crystal Alexander. Yes. Tony Burnett.
Yes.
Non-award one again, question here.
Braces to number eleven, the public economy period concerning the agenda items, I'm starting here at this side, anybody has anything? How about in a bit? Okay, how, yes, ma'am.
I could find the same thing, getting the same up there. Centers cryptocurrency. East Tennessee, they, they have a huge draw on electricity and a huge volume, very lax, people miles away to here. I've always, I expressed my concern to you a couple of years ago. That's discussing.
Exactly what it's discussing.
My opinion of that is look long in market.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
So what we just did is we limited that, it can only be done in places zoned industrial. Well, now you don't have to worry about your neighbor having a crypto farm next to, next door to you, or being in residential or an agricultural area. But we voted on, limits it to just industrial.
But is there, for instance, I live in a town that we drive, it's a quality too, would they just sell in that building now and stay in that's industrial?
I have no idea. All I can tell you is what we limited it to with our vote.
That's a, I'll be moving. It's my home.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
This one.
What the commission just did was they made it a special exception only in industrial. So that means that although it's, they can put it in industrial zone, there would have to be a special exception sought. Even if they're in that industrial zone, they have to get a special exception from the local zoning appeals, a public hearing would have to be conducted. Can't limit completely because law doesn't allow. Adult bookstore. We can't limit that completely, we can make it a special exception in an industrial, and that's the most limiting that it could possibly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. I can close the public hearing, brings to number twelve, old please, type Adams, I have none. Braces to number thirteen, legislature.
Thank Greg Mitchell. Sorry.
That was, that was a nice. Save your mouth. Again, any more nomination?
Move to close.
I'm ready to close, I have a second. Second. I run. Well, it's me, thank y'all, man, I appreciate it. Appreciate y'all. Second, that's up. Let's move us. To number fourteen, legislatureman, voting.
Nominate Nathan Moon.
Nomination Nathan Luna, any more nominations?
Make a motion, do all nominations cease?
Make a motion, nomination cease, do I have a second? Discussion, I'll invite aye. All in.
Thanks, guys.
I acclamation. Mr. Lee. Number loses to number fifteen is Mr. Bobby Cox with ESG, will present feasibility study for Cannon County State.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Honorable commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here today, as he said, my name is Bobby Cox, I live in Mack Minville, just right down the road, seventeen miles from where we're standing. Just a little bit about energy systems, we are a firm, a general contracting firm that works in Tennessee, we have an office in Brentwood, office in Johnson City, our home office is in Evansville, Indiana, I have thirty years' experience in, in building and construction and energy management. My background is, I have twenty-nine years in education, worked in Warren County Schools for twenty-nine years, twenty-one as an administrator, last eight as superintendent. And spent four years on the county commission, so I've sat in your chair, understand what you do, and thank you for, for the job that you do. Now we have a limited amount of time, just wanted to give you some of the highlights, the full document that we provided in the school district is here, I'm sure you can get that from Ms. Bonnie. Would like to commend Ms. Bonnie and their team for working with us and taking the initiative to do feasibility study for the schools. And what we wanted to do is provide a little bit of information of what we found, answer any questions that you might have. So, as you can see, just on the first page there, this was kind of our guide as, as a roadmap, I guess, was to take a look at the funding, capital improvements plan over the last ten to fifteen years, and then also project in the future what we, we felt. So in the research, when we looked at that, we looked at the transportation budget, you operate twenty-three buses currently, at the time that we did the study, which was last year, you're three bus drivers short. Not, not to say that that is something that does not happen across Tennessee, that is a shortage that happens across, but in the blue area there, currently, there's no shortage of drivers, no substitute drivers. And the configuration and zoning did increase a little bit of ride time when schools were restructured. Budget configuration, as you know, Ezra funds have gone away, general purpose school funds, federal budget funds are what operates the school district along with local funds. The new sales tax revenue that was established, I understand this year was used to increase teachers, bus driver pay, which, which was good. And as you're aware, you know, anytime you have building improvements and, and construction plans, things of that type, a consistent funding stream kind of helps that along the way, so we did look at budget. District enrollment and projections, we looked at a four hundred to six hundred student grade structure for schools for the district. Last year, when we did the study, there was about seventeen hundred ninety-two students, which is a decrease of three hundred and two students from when we started in fourteen fifteen until today. So that was kind of our starting point, at the end of the school year, there were seventeen hundred and twenty students, eighty pre-K students for eighteen hundred enrollment. When we looked at several studies of projections in your location, we forecasted a growth of maybe one point eight to two percent a year, going to thirty, thirty, twenty, thirty-four, thirty-five. So this year, currently, you have seventeen hundred and sixty-six students, eighty pre-K students, so eighteen hundred and forty-six students, so somewhere in that, you know, one and a half to fifty percent range, due to the location. Looking at the schools, just real briefly, we'll hit the highlights there, we looked at Cannon County Elementary, we looked at their program, we looked at the number of HVAC units that were presently in, you know, in the school and actively working. There has been renovations done to that building, along with the middle school, as you're aware, the elementary and middle school operate on the same campus. So there was some leaking due to HVAC leak that we had to, or that the company had to, the district had to repair the floor there, they did install fifty units to complete the installation, and there's twenty-two new units installed, serving the middle school and the community. district, um, and eight restrooms for 400 people, so that was an issue that they had noted when we had talked to the administration. Um, currently, when we went out there, I think they were having some issues with the fire alarm system, security system, I'm sure those have been remedied at this point. Uh, LED lighting, you know, is an improvement that could be made in the school to save energy, uh, as well as some HVAC renovation that are, uh, ending, getting to the end of life. So overall, building renovation plan recommended to address those needs. Overall facility is, you know, seems to be in good shape, it's been well maintained over the years, uh, by the administration and the staff, and has been, uh, educationally updated with technology as funds have been played. Um, Cannon County North, again, uh, issues with restroom, no staff restrooms, the clinic area is taking up some classroom space there. Uh, there was a, a gate that was, uh, in need of repair for security, uh, I think that probably has been repaired at this time. Uh, again, lighting, HVAC, uh, no controls in place, so energy efficiency was a concern there. Um, it will, I think that, uh, roof, uh, we did take our roofing folks out, they said within three to five years, I would probably need a new roof on that building. Um, and then there was multiple portable buildings that were in operation at the school. Uh, the middle school, we can, or, that's the same as the elementary school, so perfectly the same issue, but, that we highlighted there. And then the high school, um, again, it's had a new roof, it was built in 78, uh, three additions since then, not unlike most high schools around. Lighting has been recently changed to conserve energy, uh, it's got water source heating and cooling that has caused some issues over time. Uh, it's got new keyless entry for safety, uh, and the traffic, you know, that was highlighted there as well. It's something that there's not many exit or entry points, uh, to the campuses, if you're aware. Uh, and we were also asked to review the veterans gym. Uh, again, that, that facility is not being used at this time, you know, there would need to be electrical, you know, there's probably some foundational plumbing and HVAC issues, uh, to repair there. The gym floor has been protected over time, and I do understand that there was a storm, uh, that moved the roof, and that's been replaced, uh, at that time. But, uh, our recommendation to the school district was the cost of updating and renovating that facility, uh, for anything other than gym, uh, might outweigh the overall benefit. So, uh, it's really, uh, you know, you walk in that facility just to kind of step out, that's a really nice nostalgic, you know, gym, it's nice, you know, a nice facility I just didn't recommend for, for school, uh, funds to be put into that when other, uh, things could be done. Uh, Eastside Elementary, as you know, is offline, uh, building has new windows, has a new foyer area, it will need a roof within, in the next three to five years as well, um, as well as some upgrades in plumbing, uh, septic system, new classrooms, if that was ever used for an educational facility again, uh, depending upon what it was used for and, and the size that, of the facility that you wanted to use it for, uh, you've got plenty of land to build out there, add on, or whatever you need to do there, and whatever code requirements would be there. So at the end of the study, we recommended, um, you know, three different things. Uh, that option one was to, uh, the current plan would require upgrades and renovations to all schools, bringing Eastside back online, converting Cannon Elementary to a 68 middle school, uh, and a pre-K, because you have a pre-K new facility there currently, uh, and will be established at the current, uh, Cannon Elementary and Middle Grade, or Middle School side. Uh, plan addresses overcrowding at the middle school, allows for expansion of CTE programs at the middle school. Um, estimated cost at that time was one and a half to three and a half million, that could be up and down depending upon, um, you know, what the building costs are at that time. Um, another option would be plan would require Eastside to be turned into a 68 middle school. Again, that could, could happen or could not happen depending upon what school district and the county wanted to do. Uh, again, that cost would be, you know, more costly, five and a half million to 10 million, you know, could be 18 to 24 months if you wanted to close that route. And then building a new school, that was something that the administration had discussed, I think the school board had looked into, uh, if there was a new construction of a new middle school, uh, and not use Eastside, or that could be used at the CTE center or sold, uh, however the county and the district wanted to do that. And the income cost, that, you know, new school could be 40 million to 60 million, uh, depending, that'd be just really bricks and mortar, but only, uh, I guess, uh, school that I know of that's been built currently is in, and it's a cable school, it's 40 million. Uh, they got an elementary school, and that was not athletic field. Um, as I said, this is just the highlights, and I know this is just a report, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, or I'll, I can stay around after the meeting if you have those, but, um, we provided that to the school board and, uh, bring that to you to provide the information you want.
Any questions?
Yes.
Quick question, in the call that you provided here, does that include what it would cost to bring Eastside School back up to code to be reopened?
Uh, well, at the time we did the study, uh, that was an estimate. Um, you know, I understand there's been some issues, you know, at the school that might, you know, add to that cost. Uh, but again, that was the estimate at the time that we did the study.
You want it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's good. School facilities tax would factor in, Speaker President, from, from TESO, we have a school facilities tax, and I said, and I spoke with the finance department today, they're giving me a little bit of trustee, trustee is saying $130,000 for the last 14 months, invasion and revenue to be worked out. And I didn't know that was factored in. No, I don't think we did factor that in, did not factor that in. Actually, we did look at the budget, you know, the overall school budget, and the funding streams that fall into that, we said factor that in. They, uh, we didn't, we didn't, we looked at that, if that's in the budget. Just looking at the facilities.
I'd like to inform the commission about that. That has been significantly changed. Essentially, one of the losses from, uh, Home Builders Association, we will then sue, uh, lobby the state legislature to change the entire school facilities tax, taking away the ability for us to enforce that through the courts, like the bid pool. And also, potentially are enforcing measures on that, and making us reapply every essential census, uh, and, uh, for us to continue that school facilities tax, that's going to cause us to gain population at 20% every 10 years, which by 2031, we will, we will have to reapply in 2031. Don't expect, anybody expects us to be 3,000 people in 2031, essential census. Therefore, it's, uh, school board and, and all these funding issues is going to have to factor in the school facilities tax, technically anything, revenue stream, anything in time. Which loses about 300, 300 to 350,000 dollars a year.
What, what was that, did I hear what you said?
The school facilities tax in 2031, it looks like.
Ian?
Uh, one other question, in, in your estimated cost of the options, did that also include the transportation cost of, I think most of your options talk about bringing Eastside School back online. Did that include, uh, additional buses and transportation using that school again, or is that?
Well, what we, when we did and talked to the transportation director, I think they're still kind of utilizing the facility there to transfer students, uh, now. What we heard from the administration in North and South was the ride time was increased a little bit from having to plus kids across the county and things of that sort. So, you know, that possibly could decrease ride time, you know, bringing that back online. Um, as far as impacting the transportation budget, you know, it, it could, you know, up or down, no, just depending upon how routes were. So we really didn't look at overall routes and, and how that might affect it, so that's a good question.
You want it?
I don't think so.
Thank you, sir. Brings to number 16, group closures of the Auburn Town Library.
Make a motion to group closures library.
Good motion. He's got it.
Uh, this, just to let everybody know, the, the Auburn Town Library wasn't being utilized in a effective manner, uh, actually speaking to the mayor and city council there, it was very, very, very low turnout, uh, and they wanted to go a different direction using it, uh, for the historical society and for city offices. Uh, there doesn't seem to be any, anyone disagreeing with, with the, the new use of it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, maybe Mr. Singleton, but you said no one's a disagreement, so the library board is good with this?
Yeah, the, uh, they sent a letter. Yeah, they sent a letter, everybody was, seemed to be on board with, with, just because of the low turnout, and then after the flood, we had, uh, the city put money back into fixing the building, the city owns the building anyway.
And the building's still going to be used, I believe, what is, for the society?
Historical society and, uh, Auburn Town City offices. It is, it is a city building, not a, not a camp.
You want it?
Nathan Lehman.
Yes.
Nathan Sanders.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Chris Singleton.
Yes.
Curtis George.
Yes.
Katie Mayer.
Yes.
Brad Braden.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Alexander.
Yes.
Tony Burnett.
Yes.
Brings, if, if you see the, the letter from the, the board trustees, if they're able to operate after two votes, they can vote in, and, and we've got, uh, Martin Petty and, and, and chairman of the board trustees, I agree, if, if anybody has any questions, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer or, or help us clarify anything, 'cause I, I told them, I said, if I get side blades on this, y'all straight, yeah. But, uh, the next one is to, uh, approve to remove Auburn Town Library service hours from the MOE.
I so moved.
Say it. Motion second. He's got it.
Are they going to utilize the staff in anywhere else, or is this gone?
That's the next issue, it's, uh, it's, uh, sorry.
But, the, all we're asking you to vote on now is just to take the overall hours that they're using from the hours that the state expects us to deal.
Okay.
But the hours for the, uh, use, for the employees is the next, next.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a moment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Make a, just second, second, second. He's got it.
Nathan Lehman.
Yes.
Nathan Sanders.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Chris Singleton.
Yes.
Curtis George.
Yes.
Katie Mayer.
Yes.
Brad Braden.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Alexander.
Yes.
Tony Burnett.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'll probably have to have to give a phone this one, um, because, and Martha, if you would, if, please.
I'm going to say one thing, and I'm going to, Martha.
Yes, sir.
But those hours that we pay for the employees, nine hours, service hours, the MOE.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're not quite sure if we would like to keep them, but if y'all want to move them, but one thing we had to do when Auburn Town, uh, just a thing that happened in the flood over there, all the books, uh, got wet and things, not all of them, but some of them, we just had to get them out, and the library paid about $3,900 to get them out and store them for a while, then Martha and Brooke drew out and moved them, and now they're in the basement of the library, and we get through this procedure tonight, and the state will tell us what to do. They may take some of them, they may say throw them away, but we can't do anything for the state, that's, I'm going to let Martha explain, but.
If, if you want to, you can come up with whatever.
Please come up, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you want me to do it?
Yeah, please. But this is to vote on staff and the MOE funding for that.
Right, and, and you all got the, uh, the handouts, right? So, on that, um, so what we're talking about is, this is the maintenance veteran, and what he just voted on was the service hours. So if you look on the front page, it's money, and so, in, in the money is the nine hours for wages. And so you have the option of taking back that money. We have to vote and hand out and tell the state, we decrease the nine hour service, we decrease nine service hours, we're going to decrease the wages nine hours. And that comes to about $7,000 a year, $7,000. I've got a list if you want to see it. We were hoping to be able to keep some of the wages, our duties have increased, times have changed, like, I think at one time, one person closed the library, I think you're looking at it, that's not safe, we need two people there to close the library. Um, we are now in charge of getting all the books in our catalog, at one time the regional library did all that work, and so we were hoping to keep the funds for wages, but I understand you want to take back, and I don't know if you wanted to say anything, doesn't matter to you. So, does that help clarify or?
Miss Gannon.
What is the, uh, recommendation from the library board to do for this money?
To keep it for wages. It would allow us to have a part-time person.
I would keep the money for wages.
Sorry?
We were hoping to be able to keep some of the wages. Our duties have increased. Times have changed. Like, I think at one time, one person closed the library. I think you're looking at it, that's not safe. We need two people there to close the library. Um, we are now in charge of getting all the books in our catalog. At one time, the regional library and all that work. And so, we were hoping to keep the funds for wages, but I understand you want to take back. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything. Doesn't matter to you. So, does that help clarify or?
Yes, again.
What is the recommendation from the library board to do for this money?
To keep it for wages. It would allow us to have a part-time person.
I think we keep the money for wages.
Sorry.
Let him keep his way. Then, uh, who's that? That's two, three of you. Everybody.
Pick one.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Nathan Sanders.
Yes.
Chris Stink.
Yes.
Curtis George.
Yes.
Eddie Mayer.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Alexander.
Yes.
Tony Burden.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much, Matt. Thank you so much, because we talked about it for quite a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Three, sir. Two, number nineteen, group changes to, up to highways employee and.
I so moved.
I so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Nathan Lehman. And he's good.
Who's second?
Eddie Mayer.
Eight, five.
Yes.
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 Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Chris Stink.
Yes.
Tony Burden.
Yes.
Brings us to, uh, number twenty, where is the jail committee's update? And that's me. We do have a chair, but you're listening. Judge Calvin, appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. If you look, we put the, of the last meeting minutes here, I'll let you look at those, uh, the major, what, what I wanna look at is this paper, the thing one that's taken care of. Uh, we go down through here and, and, and before we even start, I want to say that this is in no way, no way, no how, maybe this has been no way, no how, uh, actual figures that it will be. This is, this is totally an estimate, and, and that's all it is. It, it's just a estimate of a figure that, that I guess you could probably start at, but it is in no way any held to any means or any, in, in, in any way whatsoever. If you look, uh, you can, you can look, I'll let you read this, this first page here. It calls for a hundred and thirty-two beds and, uh, one is, uh, two options, a sheriff's, uh, hundred and thirty-two beds, uh, in the sheriff's office and an exit, and a hundred and thirty-two beds with a justice center, with two courts and, uh, and their support spaces, is what it says. If, if you look on down, it tells you about option one, option two, uh, if you have any questions about it, I'm, I'm sure that Mayor, uh, Mayor Judge Calvin will try our best to answer. But the bottom line is, if you go down, where it says, uh, recommended planning budget, and, and that's just what it is. It's just recommended it, like I said again, it, it is just an estimate, it's not, uh, named after a picture.
This doesn't take into account any land that would have to be purchased. Where did the hundred and thirty-two, uh, bed, uh, suggestion come from? Did it come from, uh, state?
It came from C test. Come on. Uh, uh, it came from C test, um, and that's a high end. That's, that's what we can do fewer.
And I don't believe that fewer is the direction to go with that.
Well, a hundred and thirty-two to me is too much, because we have forty-nine.
With a, with a former corrections background, I, I disagree on that one with, with the way things go.
How it's going there, you know?
That is, it came from C test, the TCI.
Yeah.
It came from Tim Hart.
Okay.
See, I don't see a thing in the next thirty years. I mean, you gotta look at it as thirty years.
I spent a time there with hundreds easier.
A hundred?
Yes.
Absolutely.
No, there, there's already been a hundred houses currently.
Yes.
Yeah, there's.
And I'll just, and I'll just tell you, modern, modern construction now, they do a justice center. They do, absolutely. Because this, I, I've been to lunch courts, okay?
Yes.
Not as a defendant, but, but I can tell you, this, this courthouse, even though great strides have been made by the honorable Matthew Calvin, judge, to fix this place up and have it looking good, there are certain modern amenities that attorneys need, like an overhead, an Elmo system to present evidence, uh.
Security factor.
Not as best as exposure. Um, a place for the jury to sit comfortably, because they don't wanna be here anyways. Um, two courtrooms would be good, because right now, if they're like, say that there's a one-week jury trial, sorry, Judge Calvin, you don't get to have court this week. Sorry, Chancery Court, you don't get to have court this week, because we've got a one-week murder trial, or whatever that we've gotta do for this week. So, it guns up the works.
Security is a huge part of it.
Security, he makes it a big thing.
Transport from the jail.
It's, it's next to the jail, so they're already there. Also, I don't know if you guys have been to the basement recently. It's, it's just not a great place. The clerk's office shouldn't be in the basement of the courthouse.
It should.
So, and, and, you know, eventually remind people to send a desk in the hallways or something. So, I think that we're gonna have to address the courtroom issue down the road anyways. Justice Center addresses the jail overcrowding, and it addresses the courtroom issue, so inevitably come up. I know it's gonna cost money, but.
That's my next question, but we're gonna get to move.
We can't, and, and, and I want to break, because, because, look, and, and we've already started the tip of the business, but the, the recommendation, I believe, it's right ready, that we come every month and give an update, and I agree with that. And Tim Hart, C test, his, his, his recommendation is, is be transparent with everything. Everything needs to be transparent. Everything needs to be laid out. With, nobody caught my surprise, if the public's not caught my surprise, or any of that, that's what we, that is gonna be our thing. And, and that's what we're trying to do. And to say it, if you look at the numbers, and, and it's all gonna get down. And like I said, this is only estimate, right? And, uh, if you look at the first option, which is stand long jail, if you want to call it that, sheriff's office is twenty-one, twenty-five million, that's, that's an estimate. Uh, for a judicial system, thirty-eight, forty-four million, seven hundred and fifty dollars of square foot, I believe is what they're getting for building the jail now. And five hundred and fifty dollars of square foot for a courtroom, I believe it is. Uh, so, uh, if you look at those numbers, uh, it, it kinda blows your mind. Uh, it does not, Judge, you got any?
So, one thing that, I think it was Mr. Hart, someone from C test, maybe it was TCI, told us early on, was that the jail aging three times faster than other commercial buildings. So, you got a three, yeah, jail built in, what, ninety, ninety-two, something like that. So, effectively, you got a ninety-year-old jail, you got eighty-six, thirty-seven-year-old courtroom. So, uh, uh, obviously, at the end of the day, this body will make the decisions on what happens with this, but we just, I think as the committee have a duty to bring to the public, all of our findings, good, good and bad, where we're in, pure county, that you all are elected decision-makers, we make that decision. But one thing that the committee's going to do, and anyone of its welcome attend with us, uh, set up a schedule of tours to other counties to look at their jails and justice centers, different types of options. So, we've set up tours for, uh, Smith County and White County. Uh, I intend going to other counties, just to get ideas, see what they like, see what they don't like, see how it compares and contrasts with Cannon County. So, uh, that is one, a thing that the committee's gonna be doing soon. Be looking forward to reporting back to you, the answer to that. So, we're here for you. We serve as committee, it's your pleasure. So, what you have us to do, we'll do. But we just wanna be as open and transparent as, as possible in this process.
Yes, sir, Mr. Burden.
Chair, would it be fair to say, or you may not comment on this, could part of the fact that we don't have more in our jail than we do have to do with the fact that we don't have a sufficient.
Uh, could visit that.
That's what.
If you build it, then we come.
For maybe we wouldn't be sending state money to other jails.
Kind of what you say. I mean, we say we don't need it. If you build a two-hundred bed jail.
Mr. Gannon?
I know, we started using the use of ankle brace bits and stuff like that. Has that helped as far as the getting people out or keeping people from having to go over to the jail and stay for a small period or extended periods of time?
Not yet, as, as general plume knows, uh, statutes are changing yearly that, that make things like ankle monitors sometimes mandatory in certain bond release situations. So, that would be something that help a little bit as we go along. Certain domestic cases now require implementation of, uh, tracking devices and all of those things. And that's not discretionary for the court in certain situations.
And if it's aggravated, so if it, if you have aggravated domestic assault, before you can be released on bond, you have to wear an ankle monitor, and you can't use indigency funds to fund that ankle monitor. So, the issue is that people that get arrested for aggravated domestic assault, they have an ankle monitor's bond condition, they can't make, it could be a hundred-dollar bond, and they couldn't make it because they can't afford ankle monitor, because it, you know, nine dollars, twelve dollars a day. And if you're getting arrested for aggravated domestic assault, typically not making nine, twelve dollars a day.
So, looking at the, uh, looking at the jail, uh, location, is, talking about leaving it there, or trying to find land to build a new jail, or is it possible to stay where it is and go up?
Well, I intend to follow, as far as that gravitron to it, and make sure that it's, you know, that we're not gonna have to go somewhere else. But I think we'll look at all options still at this time. But most ideas are that we probably have to relocate to another side somewhere. But, um, but we'll explore that option for sure. Absolutely.
Whenever we, whenever we get RQs go out, and we, we hire RT or Project Ben, I'm sure that, that will.
How much? What's the size of the property now that the jail's sitting on, most of the county? Six, seven acres, three acres?
Yeah, but I think seventy-five percent of it's on the flood.
That's not why I'm asking. I just wanna know how much property does the jail sit on?
It's sitting on, it's sitting still holding.
Okay.
And there, there, there's land in front, okay? It's a flood plain, too.
Right.
And, and just, just throw it out there.
Does the hospital, how far down do they come to? Where, where does that land stop, start?
On the hospital, as a matter of fact, hospital, I'm up to the road. There's a lot up the road. So, that's, that's, that's the lot I was talking about. Up to the road, it, it is hospital. They said, what they, I might say, last, last I know, they, it bears about it, they could burn it, see if it fell off. So, and it's in floodline. Uh, and, and, and I, I'm just, I'm just gonna throw this out.
I mean, there's a lot of things now that are being built, built in floodplains, that's being taken care of by excavation and construction companies. All of that can change. So, the floodplain thing, I'm just, I'm done with it.
The, the only thing, the only thing, Brent, that, that holds back on floodplain is my conversation with USDA. My conversation with USDA and Josh Wilkinson, Wilkinson with, with USDA told me that USDA would not find a jail in a floodplain.
Even if the ground was built up?
Of course, the ground, we, the, the county would have to go by, if, 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 if the same standards as a individual company, as any out, or, 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 like you're saying, keep going.
Requires development permit.
Go out, go out, and look at the ponds they built, and had to be retaining ponds with drainage.
Yeah. Will it ever the store and build these over any?
You're right.
Yeah, and they, they. But they had to get a development permit and an engineering study.
Okay, but they did.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying.
Right.
On USDA finances.
Why do you think that?
I have forty-four million. I have forty million.
Get a loan for a couple million.
Mr. Figure, this is, now, on your committee, twenty, twenty-five million dollars in costs. Thirty-eight million, forty-four million, I believe, for. Has your committee looked into funding sources for that? What are you available, what's available to you?
The, the, the only conversation that committee's had is to my office, I have had with USDA.
So, is Crane considered in a floodplain?
Crane.
They're built up.
They what? It's, it's a?
It's built up.
They what?
It's built up.
Oh, what I said, you?
Yeah, the difference is, no, no, the difference, though, is the USDA didn't finance Crane to you.
I'm sorry. I'm just saying.
That's the, I mean, that's the whole difference.
I'm saying.
I said it last.
Not, not, not even in a real possibility, but.
I mean, we get some canoes and put it.
Crane did it, so.
Chairman, would you mind double-checking with USDA about building that up? I think we all need peace of mind about that.
All right.
I know at least one person.
Is, is there no problem? Matter of fact, I've, I've got, I've got, I've got to call in Josh Wilkinson now, he's supposed to be calling me back.
But we're pretty, we're not setting on any prospects much for land, and if we did, it would cost a fortune.
I understand. And I'll tell you.
That's the same, where's it gonna go? Where's this grand facility that we're talking about, where's it gonna go?
I'll confirm about that.
No, I think it's fair. I had no idea. That's, that's a fair question.
It is fair.
There is, no, I don't, I can't think of anything.
Built over there?
I can't think of anywhere off the top of my head.
Which part?
I'll, I'll confirm that to John.
Am I, am I right? It has to stay inside the three limits, right?
Yeah.
If you have justice.
But if we grant his property, then, uh, but, see.
No, no, no. So, we're, we're just giving updates, just, just improvising only, and, and, and.
What you heard, for me, is kind of concerns that transparency, we, a lot of things I've heard these guys say, I've heard too, are what people are saying about. And, and it's, you know, that's part of transparency.
Yeah. Uh, we're talking to TCI, the hundred and thirty-two beds. Uh, do they feel that that number will still be adequate by the time the jail is needing, you know, before, before we outgrow, you know, in thirty years, before we can pay for a, a new, you know, pay, pay this jail off, or we gonna be back to overcrowding again?
Yeah. Now, TCI, I, I, I don't, they're not my recommendation, hundred and thirty beds and three.
Was it C test, C test? And I, I may have said both, C test that did that. My understanding was, from Mr. Mitchell, they anticipated we wouldn't need to go higher. That was, that was the high.
Was that C test or TCI?
That, that's C test.
But they based that number off of factors, other than just, we think you need it up there.
A lot of that.
That's.
Oh, man, they got all, I mean, and, and.
Bookings, everything.
If, if, if the commission, has, has, has commission seen to build such programs?
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that lays out all the, all methods, their methodology and determining.
I just wanted to make sure that that had been, we weren't gonna, looking at outgrowing it in five or six years, and, and this is our plan for the next thirty to forty years.
Uh, uh, my understanding was it's based on projected growth with all the factors for about thirty years.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, back.
Mr. Chairman, back, let me piggyback off of Ashford's, uh, question. If it's just a jail, and not a jail and justice center, so if it's just a jail, does that have to be in the camp, uh, in the city, or can that be in the county?
My understanding is, my understanding is the justice center makes it be in the city.
Okay, so if the option became feasible for just a jail, we could go into the county, not...
See, there are other options here, you could, I'm saying I'm advocating for this, but you could leave us here, build it, you could do nothing, you could leave us here, build a jail, you could move towards somewhere else, rehab another building, build a jail, I mean, I've heard all kinds of options for it now. Or build a new facility that encapsulates everything, you know? So, like, for instance, we're going to look at White County, I toured White County's, you know, justice center, so I stood in the tower in the jail as far as they take inmates up on an elevator, and it's a straight-shoed hallway from the tower to the general sessions floor. Transports cuts down the amount of deputies you have to have, and then there's a split on the tunnel, excuse me, to the circuit. Obviously, that helps the sheriff's department a lot, so that's one option we had as...
And, and my, my, if, if I'm not mistaken, that, that if this stand-along jail still hasn't been sitting, no, it can be in county, it's stand-along church.
Yep.
But did, did Jill Hart not tell us that there's all kind of options, but you're the best that you need to do, stay with three options?
He asked us to try to, Jill Hart, C-Tas, asked us to try to limit those options, because, you know, we got fifteen options, and we just get sideways on all these options, and try to go pretty fast, and then...
Yeah, because I think the last time they did a study was, what, two thousand fourteen? And if they had started, am I right about that, two thousand?
Yep.
And if they had started the process then, it'd probably cost half of what it's cost.
Sure.
Because of the cost, inflation and prices, and so if we're right, another ten years, it's just, you know, keep going up.
There's that issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all. All right. Thank you. Two. Roundhead, go to Roundhead and Park.
So we have one budget amendment. Amendment number two, and that was to get a change order for the camera installation. We're going to take that, take that out of the courtroom securities litigation tax.
I'd like to motion to approve Resolution V eight twenty-four slash twenty-five, that's true.
I'd like to approve V eight twenty-four slash twenty-five, that's true, and I'm saying, thank you. Second, in discussion, I would say, right, uh, oh.
And then you're, um, in the back of your book, the July and August reports are in there, um, on the sentence spreadsheet, you can see that the, now, all the funds are under the ideal percentage, but the general fund is a little bit over, and that's because in the beginning of the year, we have to pay attention to business management, we have to pay our software support fees, and then we paid out the opening with money, so it's, it's a little over, but that should, like, rest of the war. Any questions?
I'm off the yard. Go, go, go. I'm saying, I'm right, uh, I'll go.